Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Picken County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting on Wednesday, June 24th. I'm Kelly McNicholas Curry. I'm Vice Chair in the room here at our admin building. Also in the room is Commissioner Patty Clapper, our county manager John Peacock, support staff Jordan Bachelorette helped us get through this Zoom meeting. And our remaining members of our board are joining us from home, George Newman, Greg Pocheman, and our Chair Steve Childs, who I will turn the meeting over to at this point.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Welcome, everybody, today on another nice summer day. John, I believe we have one addition to the agenda. Could you describe that?
Yeah, that's correct, Steve. This is following the board's work session yesterday where the strategic plan that was approved by the APSHA board was presented to the Board of County Commissioners pursuant to the intergovernmental agreement establishing APSHA. The board and the city council need to ratify that. So we do have the addition of a resolution in the Board of County Commissioners of Picken County, Colorado ratifying the Aspen-Picken County Housing Authority 2021 to 2025 strategic plan. We propose that the board add that under consent agendas.
So move to amend the agenda to reflect the resolution from ACR.
Second.
I mean, APSHA.
Okay, any discussion?
ACR, too.
In favor of adding it to the agenda, say aye.
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 I don't know what board I sit on, right?
Okay, and I think, should we do that? Item number?
Two B.
Three? Two B?
Two B.
Two B, okay. Okay, are there any public comments at this time? You need to call in on the phone number 669-900-6833. The ID number 811-8995-6470. And the password 796056.
And Steve, I'll go ahead and pull that up.
On the...
I can share that, too, Kelly.
So Steve, it looks like we have four individuals who've called in for public comment. At the top of the list is a number ending 0039.
Okay, the number ending in 0039, would you like to make a public comment?
No, I'm just here to audit the meeting. Thank you, though.
Okay, the next number is 8797.
8797, if you want to speak at this point?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Lee.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. My name is Lee Mulcahy. I'm grateful for many things. And the Vice Chair wrote to me, and she said that she was empathetic. And I would question that characterization because, as you know, Steve, we brought her 2,000 signatures from that were collected out in front of the courthouse, in front of the City Hall, and in front of the city market. And it was done by an 84-year-old widow, who Kelly knows, she's our neighbor. And I just think that is the most disrespectful thing. I know that you say you've met on our situation in secret executive session, but that's not the same thing as a public session. I think we all know that. And I'm very frustrated with her reluctance to even talk about, since she represents APSHA for the board, with Rick Head refusing to recuse himself from discussions about our eviction of the home that we built. And I just, I'm sad because I think that she wants blood. And, you know, when you, when you send a SWAT team to your neighbor's house, I think you're going to tie your political future to that. And, you know, frankly, Steve, you were born here. But this used to be Texas between 1836 and 1845. And I just, it is insane for us to think that she moved to our neighborhood just a block away five years ago, and wants to order us out of our house at the point of a gun. And that's what government is. It's ideas that have to be enforced by the point of a gun. And there's libertarians, and there's authoritarians. And sadly, my neighbor Kelly Curry is an authoritarian. She's ambitious, good for her. But the, I simply ask one small favor of her, you know, George is going to say no, 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 because I told him he had no cojones like five years ago during an interview, and he's never, Mr. Newman has been upset ever since. And I think with politics, we have to have thick skins. And the favor is, our attorney, as you know, we have oral argument in front of the Court of Appeals at the end of July. He is having chemo, and he would like to postpone that for two months. And I know their answer. I know those city employees that you're frustrated with, I get it, me, too, are going to say no. And I just think, as a community, that is the wrong way to go down. You know, I kid my neighbor, I call her Queen Kelly, I bless her heart, but she wants war. We want peace. We just simply want 15 minutes in a public session that's going to start the ball rolling down the hill. Because why? It opens a can of worms. Why? Why does that matter? Because APSHA, your baby that you're getting ready to talk about, broke the law in multiple ways, multiple times. You know, Steve and I marched in Black Lives Matter five years ago with the local Aspen Jewish Rabbi and President of the Aspen Jewish Congregation. And these, there's marches all over the nation. There's riots for the first time since the late 60s in this degree. Why? Because of people like Kelly, because of government overreach. We have to come together as a people, as a community. I know you guys are all five Democrats, but I'm telling you, as a Tea Party Republican, I understand injustice. I was out there in the streets with Black Lives Matter five years ago, from Selma to Washington, DC. So the, yes, there is, there's an insane amount of injustice on the criminal side. But the civil side, when you guys can break the law, your baby, APSHA, with impunity, and get away with it, we need to examine the civil side, too. I think I'm a little bit over. I'm so sorry if I went over. Thank you so much for the time. I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Lee, for your comments. I think we'll do all the public comments, and then I think we have one or two comments that we wish to make in response to you, Lee, if you want to stay online to listen. So Kelly, well, who's the next number that's on there?
So Joe Wells was the next person on the call, or on the queue?
So Joe, you have the floor now.
I don't have any comments in public session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Okay, we lost someone named Elizabeth, who was on the line. I don't know if she'll try to call back. But then we have the last number is ending in 4470.
4470, would you like to speak at this time?
They may have disconnected themselves. So I don't know if you want to give it a minute for them to call back?
Yeah, we'll give it a little part of a minute here. Any number selling out, Kelly?
I don't see any new callers.
Okay, then I would like to make a brief comment about Lee's comment today. Lee was addressing his comments to one specific commissioner. We are sitting as the entire Board of Commissioners, there are five of us acting as a body. And I really dislike it when someone speaks against an individual commissioner for action on something that they took as a member of the five-person board. I think it would be more appropriate in the future if Lee or anyone calling in could have comments directed more to the entire board. I think that would be more appropriate. And John Pock, do you have some comments you were going to make today about the Lee Mulcahy situation?
Well...
Explaining the county position.
Yeah, it's more in relation to the request, the regular request, the Board of Commissioners for a hearing. And Steve, I think I would just start by echoing what you said. The board acts as a body. Staff takes direction from the board as a body. There are no authoritarian tendencies either amongst board members nor in the process. And, you know, it is a collective decisions made by the five of you. So I just think that bears repeating at this point. In terms of the request for hearing, there's really two issues. We have visited about these in the past, but I think it is worth revisiting. First, this board is not the decision-making board relative to the enforcement of APSHA's rules. We have, there are really two issues there. One, the APSHA board is a governing board for a separate political subdivision in which Mr. Mulcahy has been in dispute for some time and has had the due process of the courts to sort through those questions. Hearing from this board would not serve to, as a venue for any authoritative decision-making. Additionally, the county has no property interest in the Burlingame development, where the property at dispute is located. And so there's really no avenue there for this board to take action. Really, the one option would, you know, would be for this board to elevate the request that Lee's made to the APSHA board to see if they have any interest in having that type of hearing. I believe that discussion has taken place in the past. But that would really be the one avenue for this board. So I just wanted to have some clarity around rules as these requests come in.
Okay. George?
Thanks, Steve. Lee Mulcahy has reached a new low in his continued misguided attempts to degrade and intimidate yet another county commissioner, along with its continued abuse and snide remarks on APSHA staff, APSHA's attorney, and even one of our district judges. Once again, as our county manager has said, Picken County was never a player or involved in this issue. Mr. Mulcahy was in clear violation of APSHA's housing requirements. The issue is, and always has been, an APSHA issue, and to the extent that Burlingame is a city's subsidized housing project, the city as well. And also, I am, just to clarify, I am the board rep for APSHA, and Kelly is the alternate. But regardless, I want to give you a true summary and timeline, Mr. Mulcahy's case, and not his fictional interpretation. The enforcement action against Lee Mulcahy over the past five years has been to support the integrity of the affordable housing program. When faced with allegations or evidence of violation, APSHA has the obligation, under the deed restriction in the housing guidelines, to investigate the alleged violation and enforce compliance. A little history here, when Burlingame Phase 1 was first constructed, the city offered several single-family lots for sale to qualify residents for $150,000 per lot. Each buyer signed a standard deed restriction contract, and each buyer was required to build a single-family home on a deed-restricted lot. Knowing that construction was going to be expensive, the city also offered subsidies to buyers for the construction of their homes. Lot 1, Block 1, in Burlingame was sold to Lee Mulcahy in 2006 in exchange for a total subsidy of $189,500. Mr. Mulcahy entered into an agreement with the city to complete construction within a specific period of time. Despite Mr. Mulcahy's failure to complete his construction on time pursuant to the original agreement, the city amended the agreement so that he could complete the construction. Both a temporary certification of occupancy and then a final certification of occupancy was issued in 2016. Now, in terms of a timeline, how this case evolved, on May 18, 2015, five years ago, APSHA opened a compliance investigation regarding Mr. Mulcahy in response to complaints alleging he was out of compliance. Mr. Mulcahy identified himself at the time as self-employed, but provided no documentation to support his assertion. To document self-employment, the housing guidelines require copies of complete tax returns, profit and loss statements, business licenses, work logs, invoices to clients, payment receipts, client lists, and bank records, one or more of those, as well as any other information a person wants to submit to document and prove work within Picken County. This investigation lasted several months, including numerous requests from APSHA to Mr. Mulcahy requesting information to document and support compliance. Other than a 2014 federal tax return and a 2013 Form 1040, Mr. Mulcahy failed to provide any information. And these tax returns did not demonstrate compliance in meeting the minimum 1,500-hour work requirement. As a result of the investigation, in Mr. Mulcahy's failure to provide any of the necessary proof or supporting documentation, on August 25, 2015, APSHA issued him a notice of violation. The notice of violation gave him three options to be exercised within 15 days. One was a document showing compliance. Two was request for a hearing before the APSHA Board of Directors to dispute the finding of noncompliance. Or three, to list his deed-restricted property for sale. Mr. Mulcahy did none of these things, even after a personal phone call from the APSHA's executive director asking him to respond or appeal the notice of violation prior to the deadline. As a result, the notice of violation and finding of noncompliance became final on September 9, 2015. Accordingly, on October 1, 2015, APSHA sent a final letter to Mr. Mulcahy demanding that he list the property for sale as required by the deed restriction. APSHA acknowledged that he had submitted records on November 10, 2015. However, the records were not records of work, nor that they support compliance with the work requirement. Rather, Mr. Mulcahy submitted a box of receipts for work done on the construction of his house, which was submitted to APSHA for the purpose of determining the maximum sale price of the property. APSHA determined that he was qualified to list the property for sale at a maximum resale price of $995,000. It should be emphasized that in 2015, Mr. Mulcahy chose not to request a hearing before the APSHA Board despite the compliance letters, the notice of violation, and the phone calls with staff. He did not request a hearing before the APSHA Board until after the district court entered judgment against him in 2016. Instead, he chose to assert various defenses that he believed he had in litigation initiated by APSHA to enforce the alleged violations. At this point, five state and federal courts have reviewed Mr. Mulcahy's case: the Colorado District Court, the Colorado Court of Appeals, the Colorado Supreme Court, the US Supreme Court, and the Colorado Federal District Court. He has lost in all of these venues. Now there is an order of the district court directing Mr. Mulcahy to sell the property. Based upon his refusal to do so, the court has appointed a receiver to fulfill his legal obligations pursuant to the judgment and the order of the court. So that's the real history, that's the real timeline, the opportunities that Mr. Mulcahy has had five years ago to come up with the compliance, and he's not. And so his continued request for a new hearing at this point is certainly up to the APSHA Board, but the APSHA Board has discussed it several times, the previous board and the current board, and has decided not to allow that. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, George Craig.
Hi, uh, thanks, George. I really appreciate you going through that timeline. I, I would love to get, if we can, a transcript of that that we can share with anybody who wants to see it. I think that's very important. I did want to back up what George said about the new low. I have to say, I'm, I'm offended by Lee's recent activities in his neighborhood. I'm not going to go into the details there, but I can say, Kelly and the rest of my board members, I have your back, we've got your back, Kelly. And I just want to make sure the community understands that, that we've reached a new low. I re, I'm, I'm very upset about it. I also want to say that I think the community has our back as well. I, we, I think we've done a pretty good job representing the community here. And, and I think the community has our back on this as well. And so I just want Kelly to feel comfortable and safe living in her home, in her neighborhood, without being confronted or, or assailed in front of her children by anyone. I'm gonna say that, that's not acceptable, and I'm gonna be there to help. I'll plan on being around and witnessing this, at the very least, the next opportunity I have. Thank you for that, and just want to say, Kelly, we've got your back.
Kelly?
Can I speak before Kelly?
Sure.
Steve, is that okay? I'm gonna, I'm gonna thank George too, and that was great, that's a great scenario that you gave us. And, you know, Lee, I, I know that you've frustrated, you've been through a lot, but I have to say that as a mother, if my son was behaving in the manner in which you're behaving, I would be very discouraged, very disappointed in my child for picking on individuals in the manner in which you've chosen to do so. Kelly is my friend, she is my peer, she's a great mom, a great wife, she's a great member of this community, she works hard, I respect her. And, and I think that the manner in which you've chosen to treat her is just totally not acceptable, Lee. Even though I do understand your frustration, you've chosen to express it in the wrong manner. So, Kelly, we're here for you. So it's your turn to have the floor, Kelly.
Well, and I would just like to check in because I think what's important here before I sort of flesh out some details that have been alluded to, that, you know, Patty and Greg agree that, you know, this is not the venue for a hearing for Lee for the reasons that John had presented because this is really the pivot point for which Lee has chosen to single me out and attack me. So I'll just ask maybe after my comments if I could get that confirmation from Greg and Patty and Steve. You know, as has been alluded to, I have, I have lots of reasons to feel intimidated and threatened by Lee Mulcahy. He's taken to calling me a Nazi and a tyrant in public forums. You know, call me a tyrant, try to recall me all you like. Calling me a Nazi is really inappropriate and I think incredibly disrespectful to our Jewish community who you, Lee, profess to care about. I additionally have reason to feel threatened and intimidated by Lee for recent behavior where he has addressed my young children when they're playing out in front of the yard at my house and telling them that their mother is trying to throw them out of their house and evict them from, evict him from the house that he built with his dad. Completely inappropriate, completely has crossed the line, has caused me to have to request Lee to not show up unannounced at my house when ordinarily I don't mind if neighbors knock on my door and want to talk about county business. I think probably most alarming is Lee's unpredictability. And, you know, on one hand, within the same week, he invites me over to dinner at his house and yet calls me a Nazi and puts pro test art out in the neighborhood, calling for my recall and making veiled threats to being a Nazi. So for all of these reasons, I could feel threatened and intimidated by Lee Mulcahy. But I don't, and I won't. And that is not the reason why I refuse and don't support giving Lee and his family a hearing at this board to talk about why APSHA broke the law or to present his documentation for compliance. Because we have no interest in the Burlingame property. The B O C C has never been an appeals stop for APSHA compliance cases. Lee, quite frankly, has had many hearings in the courts. He has had a history of delivering his compliant document, compliance documents to APSHA, which did not pass muster. And I additionally have suggested to Lee that he has plenty of ways to put his compliance documents out into the public venue, which I don't believe to exist, and that's why I believe he's not taking that route. He has called me arrogant for suggesting as much, even though this is a political question and those are political tactics available to him to use. You know, I have been mocked by people who, because I take Lee's language seriously and his threat seriously. He has, as very recently of this month, and him and his girlfriend suggested that Lee will protect his constitutional rights with his life. You heard here today that he expects a SWAT team to be sent to his house. You know, I think that's very sad. In other conversations recently, Lee has also said to me that he wishes to raise a family in this community with his fiancee. And I hope that for them, if that's what they wish to do. I hope that Lee sees a brighter chapter forward once this case is closed. And I do continue to have empathy for him because I know that at an emotional level for him individually, that it is really, just a really tough situation to have to lose the house he built with his dad. But in this case, for me, that empathy does not prevail over what is right in this situation, which is justice that overwhelmingly favors the housing program. So those are my thoughts on this. I will not be intimidated. I hope Lee will, you know, recognize that our whole board does not support this request for the reasons that I gave, that despite isolating me in this, that he has picked the wrong target and that he does see a different future ahead for him because this, this path is moving forward. So thank you for the time.
So Kelly, you wanted the board to weigh in. It, it is my understanding, and I think my understanding is correct, that the Board of County Commissioners has no authority, no dog in this fight as far as APSHA and the Burlingame property and the City of Aspen. I have encouraged Lee to seek his hearing through the appropriate channels, which would be APSHA to try again, and with City Council, that there's no authority the Board of County Commissioners have. We have been giving him his three minutes of public comment for many, many, many minutes of minutes, many, many hours of minutes because that's his right to come before this board and speak in public comment. But hopefully he will continue if he chooses to, to seek the right avenue, if he wishes a hearing and the Board of County Commissioners is not the right avenue, again, because we do not have the authority.
Thanks, Patty.
Um, please, go ahead. Yeah, hi, I just wanted to say, I, I heard what Kelly said, acknowledged what you said, and I, I think I'm, you admire your, your, your courage and your strength, and I'm, I'm grateful to sit on the board with you. And I just wanted to make sure you understand, I, I heard what you had to say. Appreciate it, and, and we'll just go from there.
Okay, thank you, Board, for all your comments on that. Now I noticed that there are some more phone numbers have joined us, and we have, really have no way of knowing if they are calling in to talk about the North Star issue or, or what. But I, I think at this point, we should probably go, go on with our meeting. Some people are probably calling to respond to what comments you guys have been making as Commissioner comments, but I think we will go on, proceed with the meeting for here. Now Commissioners, are there any other Commissioner comments about other items besides the Mulcahy issue? Patty?
Yes, it is summer now. It is actually, the summer solstice has come and gone, and we are into summer. Please be respectful, if we have fire bans or fire issues that are out there, you know, our forests are still very fragile. And the last thing we need is to be having to deal with another disaster in our county, within our region, within our state. So please be careful out there, enjoy yourselves. I did read the article about the City of Aspen's concern about masks. It is a requirement, and now they are requiring people to wear them while they are outside. Please don't forget that, please. And, you know, I think if anything, what bothers me the most is to see people that don't even have a mask on their person. Maybe they're, it's in their pocket or their purse, but it's easy to slip a mask on if you just wear it around your wrist or around your neck. But John, I need clarification. Is it, again, we're gonna go to the six feet, 10 feet. It's six feet, if you can't be separated, six feet for 10 minutes of conversation, is that correct? Because then I saw a thing in the paper that looked like it was 10 feet, and then some people were saying 15 feet for 15 minutes. So it's six feet away for conversations of 10 minutes. But I think it's best just to wear your mask when you're out and about in public. Right now, we're seeing explosive numbers in states, 26 states across the country. We have the most cases now anywhere in the world. We're not seeing this plateau, this leveling of numbers. We're seeing significant spikes in states that, that it's kind of now catching up to them. So please, please be careful and respectful out there. It's a matter of not just protecting yourself and your own family, it's about, it's about protecting your community. We have no demographics now, it's been proven, that are not vulnerable to this pandemic. So please be careful, respectful, and it's not that tough to wear a mask. It really isn't. And unless you have other kind of health issues that are exacerbated or you're under the age of two years old. So thank you.
Kelly?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to take a moment and acknowledge Pride Month for our LGBTQIA community. And, you know, I, I love that the Supreme Court chooses the month of June to come out with really groundbreaking decisions. Five years ago, it was the right for everyone to marry. And now this year, it is that, you know, our, our gay and lesbian brothers and sisters can be protected at work from discrimination at their places of employment. I will note that, you know, we have, we have still far to go that gay and lesbian community, you know, they face threats and lack of access all the time, including discrimination when accessing healthcare. You know, they are not protected under fair housing laws or equal credit laws. So I hope that we continue to see progress on that front, and I will be an advocate and an ally. And then I also wanted to mention, you know, this is, this is the mask I'm wearing these days. I'll put it on really quickly here, even though we have distance in our boardroom to vote. We have our primary, our statewide primary election is happening right now. The last day to vote is Tuesday, June 30th. And here in Picken County, you can still pick up a mail ballot if you need to vote from home and you need some time to think about your choices. Or you can come into the polling place, which is open here. It's the only service that is open to the public right now in our county administration building on Main Street from 8:30 to 4:30 and 10 to 2 this Saturday. And then again, from 7 to 7 on Election Day next Tuesday. And if you need information about needing to register to vote or who is on the ballots, please visit pickenvotes.com. And you can always reach out to me because, yeah, I used to be the election manager and think I've actually done quite a lot in this community for the promotion of democracy rather than dictatorship. So, thank you for that.
Steve, can I add something really quick?
Yes, Patty, go ahead.
I forgot to mention, tomorrow is a very, very important day. Tomorrow is June 25th. It is Aloysius Leon Curry's first birthday. Kelly, you did it, you survived, you got through that first year. It also happens to be my daughter's 31st birthday, so I've done it for 31 years. So, yeah, but I want to wish Aloysius a happy birthday.
Thank you.
And it's your brother's birthday, too.
It's my brother's birthday, too, yeah.
Thank you, Steve.
You're muted, Steve.
I'm sorry, I thought, I clicked it and then I unclicked it. On June 28th are my two sons' birthdays. Nathan and Devin were born on June 28th, four years apart.
Whoa.
So they share a birth, close to Aloysius. Greg, you have a comment?
I just wanted to say, it, it's always, it's always surprising me when I hear people wondering where all this information about the COVID-19 response is. And so I just want to reiterate that if anybody is interested looking for information, thecityofaspen.com has a fact page with a lot of great information. An Aspen Chamber has one. And that there are the, the rules about wearing masks, it's very clear. And so I think that people should not have any question now about what, what we need to do. I'm just seeing here on the Aspen City page that the, the penalties for not complying with the following mask orders, $50 for the first offense, $250 for the second offense. Subsequent offenses require mandatory court appearance and a fine of up to $2,650 and/or a sentence of a year in prison. It's interesting to see what the penalties are. And, and the rules are pretty simple. It's not so egregious, it's not an assault on anyone's freedom. This is about community safety and health. Pickencounty.com has a similar, huge database of information about COVID-19 and our response to it and what we're doing for public health. Almost every restaurant and store I've seen in town has a sign on the door that talks about masks. So for people who are concerned that we, we haven't been doing enough or that things aren't clear, I think if you go and look, you'll see a lot of information. And if, if we, if we're faulted for anything, it's just such a high volume of information. But that, I think this case merits it. If the rules are clear, the penalties are clear, let's all just do this together and see if we can get through a summer without having to fall back on our openings. Thank you. And also, by the way, I voted by mail, it worked great. I've already had a response from the election office saying that they received my ballot.
Thank you, and I would like to make comments about the COVID-19 virus. Some of you know that I have been sick on and off for over three months now. My doctor believes that I had the virus in March, at the time when the tests were not readily available, so I was not tested then. More recently, during one of my recurrences of the COVID-like symptoms, I was tested and the test came back negative. So I don't know for a fact that I did, did have the virus, but I, the fact that I continue to get the same type of COVID symptoms that are peculiar to the virus leads me to believe that I, I did have the virus. I still have it in me, my body is probably still fighting it. I probably am not contagious. But given my age, I'm 72 years old now. I'm one of the older Americans who are more vulnerable to suffering bad consequences or even death from catching the virus. I am the type of person that is the reason why everyone should wear a mask. When I go out in the public, I always wear a mask. I always, probably will the rest of my life from this point on because there's, there are so many unknowns about this virus. Number one, we don't know how long the short-term immunity that people gain from having had the virus will last. It might only last a couple of months, and then they could be vulnerable to catching the virus again. We also don't really know for sure how, how long a person can pass the virus on to other people. If you had it, you feel like you got over it, but more and more people now, the indications are that they have long-lasting effects from the virus. And this is like a grand experiment, this is a new disease for humans. We don't know a whole lot about it, the doctors are learning more all the time. But in, to exercise the amount of caution we need, everyone needs to be wearing a mask, whether you have had the virus or not had it, whether you are ever around older people or people with underlying health conditions which would make them more vulnerable to catching the virus. It's so important that people follow the proper people follow the proper precautions of maintaining the six-foot distance, wearing your mask when you're out in the public. And you're doing this partly to protect yourself. You're doing it to protect the older citizens of the community who are more vulnerable to catching the virus. You're doing it for your friends and neighbors. It's the most important thing for people to do. So please, wear your mask. I think that a lot of the local people have been very respectful of this and have been following the rules. And my understanding is we have so many visitors in town right now, and many of them don't appear to be following these guidelines. Maybe they came from another state where they have different rules. But we do want to keep our tourist economy on a healthy footing and make it safe for people to be able to come, visit Aspen, and spend some time here. This is an absolutely wonderful place to be in the summer when it can be so hot and, you know, not such nice conditions in other parts of the country. And people can come here. We really have nice weather and nice temperatures, and we don't have tornadoes and hurricanes and poisonous snakes and all the kinds of things, reasons people come here, because it's nice and they can have a good time. So, I'll get off my bandwagon. I'm feeling pretty good today. I hope every day I continue to feel better, but the way this happens, I'll feel good for a couple of days, and then it slams me again, and then I'm back in bed. I sympathize with anyone in the community who has had similar situation. I know that there are other people out there who just can't seem to totally get over this bug. So, we'll move on here. George, did you have any other comments you wanted to make? You are the only one who didn't speak. Okay, so, we're going to move to consent items. We have the minutes of the regular meeting of June 10. We have a resolution for a citizen board appointment, which is to appoint Linda Viera as the regular member of the Board of Health to fill the vacancy. And we have the resolution to ratify APCHA's adopted five-year strategic plan. Do any board members want to pull any of those for discussion?
I'll just make a motion to approve all three items with comments after a second. I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, one second. And go ahead, Patty.
Yeah, I just want to comment. I want to thank Linda Viera for stepping up, and I really want to thank Christina King, right? Christina King from resigning, I mean, for resigning, from having to step down, but she was great. She really represented mental health issues on the Board of Health. For some reason, we let her move out of Picken County, and we wished we could have kept her in the county and kept her on the board. We would have still had Linda there also as the alternate. So, we are now interviewing, but I want to thank Christina King for her service, and I want to welcome Linda Viera as a regular to the board. And the other note I want to make is I want to thank Kelly and George for their efforts with APCHA in the new strategic plan. It was well done, easy to read, short, succinct. George, we know you led the way on that, and I want to thank you for your time and effort.
Thanks, Patty. Just another quick comment. I really just want to recognize the entire APCHA board. Of course, as I mentioned yesterday, we have a new board makeup. We have three citizen board members, and now we have two elected board members, one from each elected body, county, and the city with alternates as well. And for a new board to come together so well together, to be able to come up with not only a strategic plan, but a new mission statement, a new vision statement, really a new direction for APCHA to really become much more visible, not only for the residents who take part of the program, but for the entire community, because we all benefit, as we all know, by maintaining our workforce here. These are people who not only work in our community, but they volunteer within our community for many of our nonprofits and events. And we would not have such a strong community without that participation. So, I look forward to continuing to revise some of our policies. We'll be doing some outreach to the community, getting their input, engaging them, and I think it's going to be a very productive year coming ahead.
I would also echo commend the APCHA board for the strategic plan that they have come up with. It was so, so well-written. We looked at it a lot during our work session yesterday, and there was maybe one word that we thought maybe could have been picked for some different word, but it was such a well-written document. They did the entire thing online in virtual meetings. They're amended for that. We, as the Board of Commissioners, have tried to keep doing as much as possible of business as usual during this time of the pandemic. And APCHA really did an excellent job doing their business as usual. It's actually not usual business. Doing a five-year strategic plan can take some organizations many months to get to that point, and they did a really good job on that. Greg?
Yeah, I just want to extend my thanks as well to the APCHA board, the entire board, as George points out, and our members on that board, Kelly, George, who seem to be maybe higher public profile. But thanks to everyone for the work they've done. Looking forward to the next five years of APCHA. And also with Christina King, once again, thank you, and excited about Linda Viera. I'm also excited, I'm hearing that we might have a few applicants for the additional position on the Board of Health. So we'll have some fresh faces coming on from the community. So, I want to thank the community for staying involved, especially when it's as difficult as Steve just articulated. But we're getting stuff done, and we're keeping caught up. Thanks.
Are there any further comments on these three items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of approving them, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the individual consideration items. First reading set for public hearing on July 8. Is an ordinance of the Commissioners approving a lease agreement between the board and the city of Aspen and Saxon, Inc. as the less fee for the operation of the Cheryl and Sam Wiley Animal Shelter. So, let's see. Rich Engelhardt, you are on. I believe you would be the one to be telling us about this.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Rich Engelhardt, Deputy County Manager. And again, before I start, just thank you, Board, for your professional approach to everything you do. The staff just absolutely appreciates it. So, thank you for that. Yes, we met yesterday. We had Jeff Saxon in, who operates and manages the animal control facility out there, and also Ron LeBlanc, who took the lead on reworking over this lease. It was a lease that had expired or due to expire, started out in 2005, and had two five-year renewals with it. We walked down through each of the changes specifically within those articles. I believe we answered the questions. The one change that I do need to make, and Riri brought this up after the fact, and I do need to circle back with Mr. Saxon on, is it a small change on the fourth paragraph on Exhibit B in the first page, and it reads, any changes to the, I'll just read it to you here. It says, "The operator shall be responsible for conforming to and abiding by changes to the Pet Care Facilities Act, which may be amended and revised from time to time by the Colorado General Assembly." She actually sits on that board, and the change really should read, "Changes would come through the Colorado Department of Agriculture." So it's just a minor change, and thank you, Riri, for catching that. And like I said, I'll check with Seth, but I'm sure that'll be the case, and that'll be changed prior to your hearing it the second time and having the public meeting. So other than that, unless you have any questions, I think we're asking you to set that.
Greg?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I have to, thanks for that, Rich. You had just commented on how professional we were, and I was thinking about how yesterday I jokingly cast aspersions on Seth and his nefarious activities out there. He and Cruella de Vil have absolutely nothing in common. And I have nothing but admiration for the way he has run that facility. It's been a standard for the nation or the world on how to care for pets. So, next time I see him, I may, I'll probably have to bring this up again. But anyway, I just want to say, I think it's great what he's accomplished, and I'm looking forward to approving this.
No, but wait a minute, Greg. I did get a dog from Seth that looks just like a Dalmatian. So maybe I should be a little nervous. I would like to make a motion to approve.
One thing.
I'll second.
Patty moved. Is there a second? Okay, and for further discussion, Kelly?
No, I seconded, so no discussion. I support this.
Okay. Well, my comment, additional comment is, in our work session yesterday, we learned that this animal shelter is the only one that anyone knows about that doesn't receive a subsidy from the local government, which they are a part of. Seth has developed a business plan where he actually makes money. He is able to take homeless dogs and take care of them without any subsidy from the local governments. And he developed really a good business model, and I think it could be a model for other parts of the country to do the same thing that he is doing in the animal shelter. I've heard nothing but good reports of that. So, any further comments from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
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 Okay, we're five to nothing in favor of that. Next item is an ordinance of the board accepting a conservation easement from the Aspen Consolidated Sanitation District. I believe this is supposed to be continued until July 8, unless there is any new, different news that I haven't heard. So, John Ely, do you have any other information on that?
No, Steve. The matter should still be continued to allow finalization of terms on the conservation easement.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to continue it to July 8.
I'd move to continue to July 8.
Second.
Okay, any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, next we go to the individual consideration items. Second readings, these are all public hearings. For the public hearing items, people will need to call in the number, and Kelly, maybe you could put that number back up on the screen. Well, actually, you know, this isn't going to work, because we're going to have to do the, share the screen for the presentations on the items, too, so.
I have the number on the screen.
Grassroots says that they are displaying the number on the lower third of the screen during the broadcast.
Okay, George?
Yeah, Steve, I just want to make sure that when we're taking public comments on these next agenda items, that they are specifically on these agenda items and not any other comments. And I think we just need to monitor today carefully.
Not a problem. Per usual, except for those birds.
You're muted, Steve.
Okay, well, I'll say that again. Now, who was it? Was that you, Kelly, wanting to unmute? So, the first item is an ordinance adopting the revised North Star Nature Preserve Management Plan. And we have Lindsey Utter and Gary. Lindsey, are you taking this one?
I think Gary's going to give an intro, and I'll start after he's done. But I will pop a map up.
Okay, thanks, Steve. I'm Gary Tenenbaum. I'm the Director of Picken County Open Station Trails, and I actually put, as my background, one of the Beaver Dams on North Star, or actually, it's on private property as you're floating towards North Star. I was just there the other day. So, there you go. It's out there. It's not on the main channel, so it's being left alone, and it's looking great. And so, anyway, I just wanted to give, you know, an introduction to this, because it's, you know, this is a big deal. You know, for us, North Star, we take the management of North Star really seriously. And the county overall, through the leadership of the VOCC and the Open Space Board, you know, has really directed staff to manage this nature preserve with nature in mind. And, you know, for us as staff, you know, I've been on this property since I got here in 2002, and so I've been on it for 18 years. And I've really, you know, you come to really appreciate what the county vision was in the early '70s, in the mid-'70s, to protect this thing. Because seeing what could have happened to this is amazing to see the foresight for this. And that you were able to add to it in 1999 and 2000 is really just an amazing feat for this county, considering you are on the doorstep of the city of Aspen. And so, you know, it's no reason, I mean, it's the reason why it's so popular for the public, because, yes, it's a flat stretch of river, but it's just gorgeous to go float through. And, you know, for us managing it, you know, 2000, the management plan, you know, really set out a strong basis for managing this. That 80, over 80% would be closed forever for people. And the only way you get over there is through a nature tour, or if you float, you can see it. And so, you know, that was a great start. And then, obviously, you started the increase, and we had some major issues. And so in 2015, the management plan really set out a full-scale change to how this area is being managed. There's a lot of success in that. And yes, there's more work to do, and that's what this update is. This update is the next phases of what to do next. Some of it's already happening. The parking has changed. The no-parking signs have gone up, and it is changing. I was out there the other night to see how it worked, and it's working. I was very pleasantly surprised to see that people were not parking right across the street from the takeout. We still have work to do, but that really brings me to the point of, this is a multi-jurisdictional, you know, effort to manage this area. You've got Picken County Open Station Trails, you've got the Sheriff's Department, you've got CDOT, and you've got the Forest Service and the city of Aspen, because they're joint owners of the James H. Smith piece that you can see on the map there. And so, overall, you know, it takes a village to manage this place, and we need that village to continue to help us manage it. This plan has a lot of pieces in the works. You know, we're going to look at major parking changes with CDOT. And, you know, we're looking at ways to potentially do a land exchange with the Forest Service so we can control the putting. And so, you know, there's a lot more to do, but I think what has been accomplished to date, and our partners have been incredible. I mean, honestly, you know, the Forest Service, they have so many balls in the air right now. And for them to, you know, to work with us, I'm just about to sign our new agreement for the Forest Protection Officer. It's great that they're providing, you know, enforcement of wildwood, because we just don't own it. People don't understand that, but it's the Forest Service property. But with them out there, the parking is being controlled. Yes, we've had some issues on certain beautiful days, but we have an enforcement mechanism in place to help deal with that. And so, CDOT, we're working through the final pieces with CDOT to do a full-scale parking change out there. It's starting to happen. They put the signs out. the final pieces with CDOT to do a full-scale parking change out there. It's starting to happen. They put the signs out. And, you know, we're working on how to enforce that. Um, the, the sheriffs, we knew, we need their help and they've been, they've been trying. I mean, obviously they've got a lot of stuff going on, but, you know, we need their continued support of managing the parking along Highway 82 and manage any trespass that happens onto neighbors' properties. And so, I, I really appreciate you guys, um, your comments last time and your additions. Lindsay will go through those just to make sure that everybody's okay. But they really are taking management to the next level. And, uh, we're ready to implement it if you guys are ready to adopt it today. So I want to thank, um, the boards, both the Open Space Board and the BOCC for really spending the time with this. I thank the public. We got a lot of great feedback from the public. And, you know, I do always want to thank our staff because, you know, the planning staff, this is a big lift to do this public input session during COVID, you know, to finish it off and COVID is not the easiest thing. But, uh, I really thank the planning staff, our maintenance staff for getting out there and putting up the signs necessary and dealing with the parking and everything else. And then obviously you've been seeing in our ranger reports, you know, the rangers are out there. We now have the ACES naturalists out there. So, you know, the reality is this is, this is a huge effort from a huge team. And, uh, with that, over to Lindsay.
Well, the board has a comment.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Well, yeah, coming to the question, as long as we have Gary, uh, doing the intro because I'm glad to hear that, um, we're starting to get a handle on the parking, uh, Gary, but I do note, uh, looking at the ranger's report and I, I reflect that it's very similar to what we're trying to accomplish, um, in terms of education and getting everyone to understand the, uh, the critical issue in terms of abiding by our public health orders regarding COVID. Uh, we, we have similar concerns, um, at North Star and I, I note that as you, uh, showed in your range report this past week, Gary, that we're, even though the parking, uh, seems to be coming along better, um, the rangers are still reporting, uh, heavy violations to, uh, to different parts of our trail system, uh, particularly in North Star. And that includes issues where people bringing dogs to North Star. Uh, again, amplified music. I know that's part of our new plan, which would be great to eliminate that. Uh, bringing glass onto the property, disembarking watercraft on our beaches, um, disregarding no trespassing signs. So I know it's, I know it's a challenge, uh, Gary, for your staff and I appreciate all their hard work in terms of, uh, trying to, um, keep a presence up there. We know we've got a very busy weekend coming up with the Fourth of July and, um, along with COVID, along with social distancing, um, and we know that, um, a lot of the, um, attendees are younger people who seem to, uh, feel that they're immune to, uh, to this disease. It's going to be just important for the public to understand that, uh, not only is this, um, an important, uh, preserve to, to abide by the rules and regulations, but also, uh, with COVID-19 going on right now in terms of social distancing. So, again, I just, I understand the challenge, Gary, and I appreciate all the work you and your staff and rangers are doing to try to, uh, uh, keep a lid on this.
And I agree, George. And, and, you know, with, with, adopting this new plan gives us, you know, puts all those pieces into place, like some of the amplified music piece. Um, the special order from the Forest Service that's going through right now will really knock down the amount of, you know, will be able to help us with the glass issue. Um, because right now they just don't have that and we're going to get that. And so, you know, yeah, I don't think we're going to get, it is, we've had a lot of success. We have a lot of work to do. And yes, July 4th is always, unless the monsoons show up and disperse everybody, um, July 4th is always a big one. And so that's why we need the sheriff's office on board and we need the Forest Protection Officer on board. Um, because that, that between them, us and the sheriffs, you know, we can really, you know, try to control it. And, and we are learning about, as you saw in the ranger report, we're learning, we just got to, the, the new signage, the new quiet zone and everything else. It's just, we got to get this in place and we're educating right now. But as you saw in your ranger report, we are not just educating, we are ticketing. So I don't want to be it as just educating. We are ticketing and we will be ticketing, um, you know, for violations of anything in this management plan. The public health order, we need help from the sheriff's office on that one, but, you know, the reality is, is, you know, we'll see how it goes, uh, not this weekend, but also through July 4th. Any other questions before I turn it over to Lindsay?
Looks like we're good, Gary. Lindsay, welcome.
Thanks for having us. Um, I was just going to go through and highlight the things that have changed since the last time you actually seen the plan. They were in your pocket. Um, the changes were in pink, are in pink. Um, and they were based on the comments we received at the last board meeting. The first page with edits on it is page 86. What we did was under the ongoing and near-term actions, we pulled out and created a new bullet point, um, titled transportation alternatives and got the bike sharing, gear sharing wagons there, but also added a bullet point, um, to reflect working with commercial operators to potentially expand their ability to provide shuttle service. Um, because if you recall, there was a lot of discussion about less cars and shuttle options and services. Um, we added that bullet point from board comment. Um, we also expanded for the future action items, um, when it came to evaluating implementing a permit system, we clarified that a little bit further and specifically identified the takeout and/or put-in, um, and also clarified that the put-in would require the land exchange with the forest. Um, the next page, page 87, under the parking area design improvement, um, we added a whole paragraph trying to clarify and describe that there will be additional public comments on this, that, that we have more design to work through. Um, that our goal is not to continue to expand for the use numbers at North Star, but to work with the community on the thoughtful design of this. Um, and so that you, yeah, if you recall, we had a lot of conversation about parking spots and spaces and how many and where. And basically we, that'll be part of a future conversation, um, with a lot more, with a lot more idea on that. Right now we're probably not at the position to make that decision. And then the last edit to the plan, we're on page 95. And under the Nordic Equipment Storage, uh, we added the BOCC, um, as well as we had added the Open Space and Trails Board Ready to bring, if we were to move forward with the Nordic program, having a winter storage facility there, we'd bring it back to the boards for review and approval, um, prior to moving forward. That one's in regards to the Nordic program requesting a storage area for their, their, uh, grooming equipment seasonally at North Star. So, those are the edits since the last time that we all met. Um, does anyone have questions about any of that?
Steve?
Patty.
Yes, um, thanks, thanks, guys. This is, uh, really well done. Um, one thing in commenting about the no parking signs, I want to, I want to compliment whoever came up with the, the si- sandwich boards up there that say, here's the new rules, here's where you can park. I thought that was a great idea. It wasn't just a matter of you can't park here. This is what you can do. And I think that was great for public education. I think that was very beneficial because I've cruised the neighborhood when I can just to check in on things. So I think that was really well received. As to the key discussion items, um, I really appreciate the inclusion of the evaluating potential for existing commercial operators to expand their capacity to shuttle people. Um, I know that they want to be involved in that evaluation with you. I'm sure you will bring them in. As to the numbers, I think the commercial outfitters up there that have permits are concerned about too many shuttles, now shuttling too many people, um, because it would be more efficient. So coming up with a reasonable number that would allow the outfitters to, to actually provide this service, um, in a reasonable manner and a reasonable number. So I think that's really key. One of the things though, I, what happened with the gear storage boxes?
Um, I think we still have it in here in the paragraph.
I thought it was just bikes and gear wagons.
Um, we can add it in there specifically. Uh, the city of Aspen had brought up the idea that they had their storage boxes at Buttermilk that could potentially be repurposed. Um,
Well, we know that didn't work. That didn't work at Buttermilk. They were wondering if they were being more utilized for homeless sheltering. Um, but I think that's something we should look at in the future. It might make good sense. Let's just not leave it out. Let's just put it in as a possibility.
Jesse's texting me. She can, Jesse, speak up. It's in here. Um, sure, we'll double check it, but mine, I can't find it at this moment on the spot.
Okay, just, just a thought. And, um, I know how much the neighbor right across the street, I sent him pictures of the parking signs and how appreciative the neighbors up there are. As to, at least I think I was going to send him pictures. I need to do that if I had forgotten to, um, of the efforts that have been being made. But again, at least this weekend will be a trial to see how things go. Um, our thoughts and prayers will be with Open Space and Trails over that Fourth of July weekend. Thank you.
Patty, yes, I, Patty, this is Jesse and I did, that was left out and I forgot to change it in pink, but I have added that storage container back in, um, or in from the comments and, um, I'll get you the page number.
Okay, that's okay. That's okay. Just, uh, we can keep it in there if it's a possibility that works in the future. We've already got it in there. Okay, great. Thanks, Jesse.
Okay, thanks. I just, I, I just want, first of all, I thank Gary and Lindsay and Jesse and the entire crew who's working so hard up there. Um, I really think we've come a long way, uh, with North Star and I'm, I'm excited about implementing this. I also know how hard it will be. Um, and I just want to say we'll, we'll support you however I can to making this work well for, for the people, for the wildlife, for the residents. Um, I think it's great. Um, I've completely forgot anything about storage boxes and it's a little red flag for me. So I, I'm looking forward to seeing that correspondence also. Um, just wondering, I, I remember the Nordic storage box, but I don't remember the other ones. But we, we can, uh, review that when, at another time, I guess. Um, uh, and that's it. But mostly just my gratitude for, for the hard work that's being done here and for the diligence put into taking care of this super important resource that we have here. Thanks.
Well, and Greg, we will bring, you know, anytime, if we're going to put a structure out there in any way, shape or form, there's, there's, there's going to be public peace of that. We're not, you're just not going to see the storage locker show up tomorrow. So it'll, it'll be brought back.
Okay, Lindsay? Um, I don't see any more questions right now. Um, do you have any more you want to do on your presentation unless it's just responding to our questions?
Yeah, I was just wondering what had changed since the last, well, the last two times you guys have seen it. Um, so I didn't have any more to present today.
Okay. So, um, let's see, I have a comment that I would like to make. Um, a lot of people don't remember, but this, uh, North Star area was where Rudy, what turned into Rudy Reservoir was supposed to be built. This was the number one site that had been picked to do a big reservoir as part of the frying pan Arkansas project. And there was such an outcry from people in the Aspen area not wanting a big reservoir right above town, right there. And, uh, reservoir ended up being built at Rudy instead. So you can just imagine the difference that would have made if we had a big dam there and a great big reservoir. All of the North Star Preserve, difficult campground, all of that would have been underwater and our community really would be substantially different than it is now. So it's, it's really a blessing for us at the expense of the ranchers who lived in the valley at Rudy. Um, they lost their land under the water, but we got Rudy Reservoir there on the frying pan river instead of on the roaring fork. So keeping that in mind, we have a really precious resource here and, um, it's really a pretty amazing management plan that you all have come up with. Uh, I don't think it's perfect. It's still, you know, it always will be a work in progress. There will always be things for us to work on. And I think the, we all know what the, the big issues are. If there are too many cars and too many people making too much noise. We might be able to handle a number of people if they were being very quiet and observing wildlife and, um, acting as if they were in a nature preserve. Um, people going in there and not acting that way then creates problems. But, uh, these are problems we're aware of. Uh, we have a plan to work on them. Um, I hope that all of our efforts are successful and that the conditions continue to improve there. I think a lot of the solution might lie in having a good shuttle service to not have people have to drive their cars out there, but get their bodies out there in some different fashion. So we don't have to deal with so many cars. We would just then have to deal with, uh, people and people's behavior. So, members of the board, I think if someone would like to make a motion, then I think we're probably ready for it.
Yeah, public comment. And then we'll do.
Public comment first.
Okay, so we'll open it for public comment first before doing the motion. So Kelly, if I could have missed your help here.
Sure thing.
I got to get my.
So I have, I've noted folks who called in a while ago, um, in the order that they called in. I don't, we heard from 0039 who didn't have comments during our public comment. I don't know if they called to comment on North Star.
Uh, yes, hi, this is Irv Don. I appreciate everybody's efforts today. Uh, I, I, I think everyone is on the same page in keeping North Star a beautiful place and I really hope that these efforts will pay off, um, in the coming days. So thank you all and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm grateful for all the efforts everybody's been making. Thank you.
Thank you, Irv.
Thanks, Irv.
Um, Elizabeth has been on the line for a while.
Um, hello, this is Elizabeth Boils and I appreciate the efforts that you're trying to make with a situation of a nature preserve that has, um, been inundated with a high level of recreational use. And, um, I, um, appreciate Steve's review of the history of the property. Um, but James Smith did, uh, when he sold the property, um, to the Nature Conservancy, requested that there would never be any commercial use of the property. So to see the increased commercial use of the property, which increases the number of people and, um, really impacts the wildlife is difficult to witness because the commercial operators have often been in violation and there hasn't been really any restriction of their use whatsoever.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Appreciate your comments.
And then Morgan Boils has been on for a while.
Hello, thank you, thank you. Yes, I've, I've just been watching in on the meeting. Um, thank you guys so much for all of your work. Um, it's amazing to see how much time and how many different, um, how many different groups and agencies have been involved from Open Space to Forest Service to ACES and, um, I think that all of us really appreciate and value, um, the magical experience that one can have out on the North Star. Um, we want to thank you guys for all of the time you've spent collecting data. Um, 2019, in your report, there's 8,756 river users, um, during a pretty consolidated season. Um, and fifty percent of that access comes from, um, up there at Wildwood. And so it's, there's a lot of use and, um, really thank you guys for your efforts to, um, to address these issues that we're all very aware of. So thank you so much.
Joe Wells has been on the line for a while. Joe, did you want to comment on this?
No comment at the present time. I'm just waiting to hear Gary's presentation on the trail, the music school trail.
It was yesterday. Joe, that presentation was yesterday?
During a work session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll check in with Gary then. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Three, number 3862 called in. 3862, do you have any public comment for North Star Preserve Management Plan? Okay, and then I see Lee Mulcahy is still on the line.
Thank you. We applaud your efforts to preserve North Star and Open Space in general. So thank you guys very much. But regarding government in general, if you give people unlimited power, they will use it. It's just human nature. It's how we got a police state and how we have a U.S. empire that dominates and terrorizes the globe.
Steve, I'm looking to you about managing this, or I'm happy to jump in.
Thank you, Lee. Well, thanks for your support of the North Star Preserve. So, let's go on, Kelly, to the next.
That's it. Dale's here, I think he's here to present, so we can move him over to being a panelist. But I don't, oh, we've had some, it looks like we had a new caller ending in 8275.
Hello?
Yes.
My name is Linda Davis, and I live here in Aspen. And I'm a little bit concerned about the takeout point with the east of Aspen Trail passing through that. And when I went through there the other day, there were crowds of teenagers on the bridge, you know, towels everywhere. It was very difficult to even make your way through there. So just, I just wanna express concern about that.
Thank you, Linda. I see we-
Thank you. Just a comment real quickly on that, that I think that the takeout seems to be where a large, most of the issues in crowd control or in traffic control are there. I think the plan is trying to address those issues. We are all very well aware of that.
We've had another new caller come in for public comment, 5392.
Hi, everyone. This is Justin Nyberg from Holland and Hart calling in on behalf of Ed and Sasha Bass on the river. I wanted to reiterate a lot of the comments and compliments from prior speakers today and the efforts the board has taken to really earnestly incorporate public feedback. That, you know, staff has been gathering public input on this for something like six months now. And the final product really reflects a lot of public input. And we thank you for that. We also wanted to specifically recognize the efforts that Commissioner Clapper made early on to reach out to the homeowners on the east side to understand their concerns and to gather input. And really appreciate all of those efforts. Wanted to thank you for including the option to explore the takeout-based permit system. We do think that that, you know, will be a useful tool for OST to control and educate users on the river. And we'd love to be participants in overcoming some of the logistical challenges that, you know, that might result. We did wanna point out one thing in the current draft, and we'd love to see a little bit of clarification in the final as-approved plan. We certainly wanna see the plan approved today. We wanted to see, we thank you for the clarification statement on the parking. You know, we, no one wants to see 92 parking spaces kind of created up there. We'd love to see that in addition to the statement that it's not the goal of the plan to accommodate future growth, we'd like to see a clear statement that the board expresses its vision at this time, that the goal or target will be to develop a number of parking spaces at the lower end of that range. Currently, the plan calls for between 58 to 92 spaces. We would certainly love to see the board, you know, establish kind of a vision statement that, you know, the proposed plans should, if possible, lean toward that lower end rather than towards the higher end of 92 spaces. With that, thanks again for everything that you all have done. I think the plan is great, and I hope to see it adopted today. Thanks very much.
So Steve, I don't see any additional callers for public comment.
Okay, bring it back to the board. Greg, you had your hand up?
Thanks, George.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, following up on the last caller, I think it wouldn't bother me at all to have a, put together a statement. It would have to be crafted by staff, I think, regarding our thoughts about parking. So we know it's not, this isn't a growth-oriented plan we have here, where we're not trying to grow it bigger. I would be in favor of something like that. I also wanted to say, I wanted to thank Elizabeth Boils for calling in far, far away. If she's still down south. And Morgan, as well, as I know is in town. They live right on the front line. They're the first homeowner right after the Wildwood put in. And so they hear every scream, every shriek. They hear, they know, they could easily count everybody going by whether they want to or not, all day and all night. So I know they've probably carried the heaviest burden regarding their own quiet enjoyment of their property for this. And I just want them to know that we, I wanna acknowledge their generosity of Morgan's comment, Elizabeth's. And Elizabeth's concern, because that has been my concern also through this whole period, that they and their neighbors at least can not feel assailed on up in that neighborhood that used to be so quiet. Thanks again for the, to the staff for what they're doing regarding this plan. I think we're moving in the right direction.
Gary, you had your hand up?
Well, if the rest of the board wants, I mean, we could, I could propose, you know, it's in that paragraph that you see on your, on your, on your screen, it's in the pink. It's just the potential capacity. And, you know, you just, the goal of improving organizations in the parking area is not to accommodate the continued growth and demand and to reduce, you know, what we're trying to reduce is the overall number of people driving out there. And so, you know, kind of getting to, you know, that language, I think you could just add another, you know, couple words to that to really get to, you know, where you wanna go. Because we, we don't wanna accommodate the future growth. We're just trying to keep the options open because the reality is, is we just don't know. We don't, we don't wanna say a number or a lower number, whatever. We just wanna be recognized that we do want to not accommodate future growth. And, you know, we wanna reduce the overall number of cars driving out to North Star. And so, you know, that's really our goal as staff. And we've heard it from both you and the Open Space Board to do that.
Yeah, thanks, Gary. Just a follow-up on Greg's and your response. I, I'm just curious, if and when, I mean, this is a working document. And so if and when you decide or come up with some ideas for the number of parking spaces, will that again be a public process?
Yes. Yes, we're planning on, you know, that's in the second piece, it's not in pink, but it says, "Prior to implementing parking area improvements, additional public info will be sought on the proposed concepts through the county's approval process," because we have to do a location extent and/or a forest service process for Wildwood. So yes, we are gonna take future public comment on that. And honestly, you know, this is all gonna take money to do. And so we have to come back through either budgeting during a normal budget or a budget supplemental. So you guys and the Open Space Board will have the final say on that. So, you know, this is not, we have a long way to go on this, but we're working on it. And hopefully, we'll be back sooner than later to really drill down on this one.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate Greg's comments, and I certainly am in alignment with that. But I'm comfortable with the way this is worded now, knowing that it's gonna go through another public process, including recommendations from the Open Space and Trails Board, including public comment and back to the BLCC. So those conversations will continue, and I'm sure that will be in the forefront of the commissioners at that time. So thank you.
Okay, Kelly, is there, are there any new numbers at all that popped up on the screen?
No.
That you can tell? Okay, so I'm gonna close the public comment at this time and bring it to the commissioners for further discussion and a motion.
Greg?
I just wanted to make a motion to approve. And I'm also, I'm happy with, I agree with George. I think that the wording, as I look at it now, seems okay. If Gary sees a need to change anything, that's fine, that can be done in a future date. But I'm okay with it as it is, looking at this now. And I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'll make a comment.
Okay, Patty and then Kelly?
Yeah, again, staff, you've done a great job. Again, I'll have to say, I remember working on this first master plan in 1999, 2000. McCarlin and I sitting at the Senior Services Center with a group of people going through this, trying to come up with the first management plan. So definitely, the area's come a long way. Lots of issues, lots of amazing accomplishments. So I wanna thank everyone involved. And just as long as the Bass family is aware that when it comes to parking and the parking plan, there will be additional public comment. And we will be looking at the numbers. And I don't think our plan is to build the biggest. I think our plan is to build the safest. So I think that's the direction we'll be going. So I definitely am in support of this amazing management plan.
Okay, Patty, I wanna let you know, you had to step out of the room, but the gentleman from Holland and Hart extended his thanks for your outreach to the community over there when this got kicked out.
Thank you.
So I wanted you to know that.
Sorry, I had to go sign a document. Oh, that was nice, Kelly, thank you.
And then I just also wanna, you know, I just wanna call out and thank the support for the board, from the board and the staff about turning the whole preserve into a quiet zone. You know, I really, I think this is just a wonderful sanctuary. And I think it's really nice to have one place in Aspen that you can find peace rather than parties. And I hope that, you know, continues to be the legacy moving forward. So I'm excited to support this.
Thanks, Kelly, for adding that.
So I'm gonna repeat something I said at an earlier meeting, in different words maybe, but people want a, they want water to get onto where they can have a party. And they like, love having a beach. And I would love to see the Aspen community come up with a second location where people can go and party. And perhaps it could be the new city of Aspen Reservoir or somewhere in the Woody Creek area if they end up building a reservoir there. I would urge them to put a nice beach in there and some amenities where people could go and splash around in the water and do their paddle boards in a, in a better location where they could have a more party-like atmosphere. So something that people in the community can be thinking about. Maybe, maybe there's another location I haven't thought of. But we don't have a whole lot of flat ground around in this country. So flat water is a precious commodity.
I, yeah, I think that, I think that that place is called Rudy Reservoir, Steve. I don't think we, I think Woody creatures would appreciate having loud, having the same issues as that North Star. So, but Rudy is an opportunity, Chapman Dam is another great opportunity. So there's plenty of water around, there's plenty of opportunities. I don't think we need to create yet another one within, in and around Picken County.
Okay, through the comments? I'm not seeing anything, anybody. I'm gonna call the question, all in favor of the motion to approve, say aye?
Aye.
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 Thanks, guys, really appreciate it.
Enjoy the summer.
Definitely. Thank you, OST staff, for your hard work on this. And thanks to all of the members of the public who have put in public comment. There's been a lot of, you know, a lot of it was by a lot of people in comment on this.
Thanks, Lindsay, Janet, Jessie, Gary, and the rest of your crew. Great to see y'all.
Great, thank you, guys. Okay, moving on, we have ordinance, amending the ordinance 0122020 regarding the purchase of the three contiguous parcels comprising approximately 406 acres within the Thompson Divide. And it's Dale, so Dale, call you up here.
I see.
Or is it Gary who's? Dale, go ahead.
Okay, looks like maybe my video's not working. I don't know why that is, but I don't know anyone. Oh, here we go. Got a message from the host. This item is really pretty technical, as you just described. On April 8th, you approved an ordinance authorizing the county to buy a beautiful piece of land. It's about 410 acres that are located right in the middle of the Thompson Divide. And we are working towards a closing on that as soon as we can tidy up all the little items with the deeds and that sort of thing. But there were a couple of fine adjustments we wanted to make to the authorization before the actual closing. And the first one of them has to do with our GOCO grant. We had, we were awarded an $854,000 GOCO grant towards this purchase. And we had originally anticipated that we would obtain those funds contemporaneous with the closing. But due to the late start we got in doing some of the reports and things that GOCO needs, we weren't able to get up on the property until the snow melted out in late May. We'd like to have the authority to go ahead and close the property with all of Picken County's funds at the closing, $5 million purchase price, and then seek reimbursement from GOCO later. Now, as it turns out, we may or may not have to do that if we're able to get GOCO's approvals on all the little documents by the 9th of July when we wanna close. But it's nice to have this flexibility, and we're trying to respond to the landowner's needs of trying to coordinate this sale with the acquisition of some other property and the reinvestment of those proceeds. So that's the first thing this ordinance would do, is give us the authority to close with our own funds and seek that reimbursement over the next couple of months. That's the standard GOCO process. And the second thing is something that was an oversight on my part when this was originally presented. Our policies for Open Space and Trails suggest that we seek to preserve lands by conservation easements where possible. It's not always feasible to do that in a case like this where the landowner simply wants to sell the property. They're not looking to hold on to it. So we are buying the property. But as we've done with some other recent acquisitions, most recently the Payne property acquisition in Emma, we now call the Shipppee Open Space, we'd like to reserve the ability under the charter provision to later consider reconveying this property to a- to later consider reconveying this property to a conservation buyer, should that work out in the best interests of both the county open space program and some potential private party that might want to take it over and run it as a quiet backcountry ranch. So this doesn't obligate us to do that, but this ordinance would reserve that flexibility so that the county can consider that at any point in the future. The Open Space Board has recommended that you make these modifications to the authorization, and the staff as well is recommending that you approve this today. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from the board for Dale? Okay, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public who wish to call in and comment on this amendment to the purchase of the property in Thompson Creek area, could you please call in now? And Kelly, is there anyone on the?
Yeah, Lee Mulkey continues to be on the line.
Lee, do you wish to speak about this Thompson Divide property? If not, we're only taking comment on that right now?
Yes, sir. Well, when I ran, before Kelly probably even moved here, I ran for state senator as a Libertarian, and I would support preserving the Thompson Divide in any way possible. I applaud your efforts. Thank you so much. You know, you five are Democrats, and you like to trash us Republicans, especially the Tea Party Republicans.
Lee, you need to only comment on the purchase of the property, please?
Yes, sir. Well, that's what I was doing. So I'm very supportive of the Thompson Divide. My hero, Teddy Roosevelt, who, you know, would characterize you guys as authoritarians, he loved it. And I support your efforts. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Lee.
There's no one else who?
I think Teddy Roosevelt was. Anyone else, Kelly? Any phone numbers? I don't.
No one else has called in to comment.
So I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the Commissioners.
I'll make a motion to?
Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners amending ordinance zero-one-two-two thousand and twenty regarding the purchase of three contiguous parcels comprising approximately four hundred and six acres within the Thompson Divide.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been seconded to approve. Are there any further comments? I would make a comment. George, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Dale, for working on this. And not only is this a great acquisition, and again, in the heart of the Thompson Divide, of course, it's just, what would it be, just south of the Drone Park, which was probably one of our largest acquisitions up there that many people get to join with the Nordic system at Spring Goat. But it also, I think, down the road, offers future opportunities to work with other landowners who are contiguous to this property, to continue to do what we can to protect and preserve this really unique ecosystem up there in the Thompson Divide. So thanks, Dale.
Thanks.
So any further discussion from the board? I think this is a good move to make. Since we don't know exactly how we would be using this property in the Thompson Divide, the best solution potentially could be to convey it to a private individual to be the steward of the property. And then that, if that did happen, the Open Space and Trails Fund would get a big influx of money that could be redirected to other new projects if it ends up coming to that. So seeing no further questions or comments, all the vote, all in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Okay, we're all in favor of that. Thank you very much, Dale.
Thank you.
He's already, oh, jump around on the screen here. Next up, we have a resolution of the Commissioners approving second quarter supplemental budget requests. And we have Connie Baker on the line. Welcome, Connie. Good to see you.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. The second quarter budget supplemental request would increase the county's twenty-twenty budgeted expenditures by three million, six-hundred-twenty-four-thousand, eighty-three dollars. And that's offset by an increase in budgeted revenues of two million, eight-hundred-fifty-four-thousand, seven-hundred-ninety-two dollars. That makes an increase in the overall budget of seven-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand, two-hundred-ninety-one dollars. There are a number of requests that are included in this resolution. First one is a net-zero request. The Public Safety Council each year gives a six-thousand-dollar grant to emergency management for the incident management team. So it's just a grant plus the expenditure of that grant of six thousand. The second is for the employee home ownership program. The budget of a hundred thousand dollars, we went through already this year, and more employees would like to access the program. The request is to increase this by two hundred thousand, up to a total of three hundred thousand dollars. It's been an advantageous time for employees to take advantage of the program here. Is for COVID supplies and services at the airport. It's for equipment, materials, and supplies, and custodial services all for, in response to the COVID-nineteen virus situation. And that's for just shy of five hundred thousand dollars. In the Public Health Fund, there's a net-zero request. The Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment has made available a grant of thirty-thousand, seven-hundred-ninety-two dollars. And the Public Health Department used this for surge staffing in response to the COVID virus. The next request is TANF funding in the Human Services Fund. This is temporary assistance for needy families. And the county has a yearly allocation from the state of about ninety thousand dollars for this program. This year, the county has been able to support a number of families that are eligible for the program, far beyond our normal state allocation. NAM was able to work with two other counties to purchase three hundred thousand dollars in additional allocation. So this request increases the county's direct client benefits for TANF for the three hundred thousand in allocation purchase, plus the use of our hundred thousand dollars of reserved money, should that become necessary. Most of this is covered by the allocation from the state. And then also in the Human Services Fund, we've received many generous donations from Town of Snowmass Village, City of Aspen, Aspen Community Foundation, and also private donors for economic relief payments as citizens have been dealing with the need for rental or other assistance. The total for all of these donations put together is two million, four-hundred-eighteen-thousand dollars. This request is a net-zero request, recognizing the revenue and then also the appropriation that goes along with it. And then the last request that we have is for Habitat for Humanity. They asked for a contribution from Picken County of thirty thousand dollars for the Basalt Vista Playground. Are there any questions on any of these supplemental requests?
If I don't have a question, I have a comment.
Yeah, well, I want to thank, thank you, Connie, for getting the information in there about the park dedication fund, and the money's going to Basalt Vista. I want to thank the board, the rest of the board, for their support in my request that we help fund this new public park that's in Picken County, that's at the new Basalt Vista housing project. And I want to thank everybody for their support on that and for getting it done so quickly.
It was fun rereading the letter from the young boy who lives there. His diagram of the perfect playground is so precious, I think we should frame that for the Commissioners' office.
That'd be a good idea when we open the park.
Maybe have that park on a plaque at the park, too. That'd be good. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. For any members of the public who wish to comment about this item about second quarter supplemental budget requests.
Steve, Lee Mulkey continues to be on the line.
Yeah, I see Lee's number on there. Lee, do you wish to speak about this item and this item only, please?
Yes, sir. And then could I ask a question?
Just a bit to do with this supplemental budget item.
So as a Libertarian, I would just simply say, I think George Newman is a totalitarian. But the bigger the government, the less the liberty. I think we all know this. And my question would be, do I have, you know, it's always what the government leaves out. Do I have an opportunity to comment?
Steve? Um, Lee, you're off the subject now, so I think you are done. Lee, if you have other comments, you can always write us a letter to all of us that we will all get and consider it. Thank you. Okay, are there any other numbers on there, Kelly?
No, there's not, Steve.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the board.
I will make a motion to approve a resolution of the County Commissioners approving second quarter supplemental budget request.
I'll second. And thank Connie.
Okay, it's moved in seconds. Are there further comments? Greg?
Just wanted to say that thank you, Connie, for putting this together. And we've seen this, and we've gone through it, and I'm very comfortable with it. Given the current pandemic and the economic fallout from it, we have unique circumstances here. And I'm so grateful that we have you and your staff on top of this to count our pennies, so to speak, as we move forward, making expenditures for things that we never anticipated. And I just want to assure the public that we're doing this with scrutiny, and I think, I think we're being frugal to a great extent. And we're also trying to be prudent with our decisions on how this money is spent. So I'm comfortable with this and looking forward to passing it.
Okay, thank you. Greg, any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that's Connie, and I know you're on for the next item, probably at some point, too. So we're moving now to individual consideration items, emergency ordinance and resolution and peremptory readings. There are two items. First one is an emergency resolution providing supplemental appropriations to the twenty-twenty budget and amending the twenty-twenty budget for COVID-nineteen public health staffing. So John, are you going to speak to this first?
I'll let Connie take it, unless Connie, you want me to speak to this one.
Yes, the board has had a number of work sessions on this particular budget request. So a lot of information was given at the prior work sessions. Public Health Department, this request is to fund twelve full-time, term-limited positions in public health departments. The positions are split between consumer protection and contact tracing. And again, they are term-limited positions, and they will be subject to budget approval also through twenty-twenty-one. If the board so approves, they will go through the end of twenty-twenty-one. The total cost of these positions for the remainder of twenty-twenty is five-hundred-ninety-three-thousand, eighty dollars. This will be partially covered by monies that the county is receiving from various sources like the CARE Act money or FEMA reimbursement. Again, we've gone through this extensively in past work sessions. The resolution does include a budget transfer from the general fund of three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand dollars to help fund this request. Are there any questions?
Not seeing any questions right now.
All right, just a quick one. Yeah, thank you. There may be more for John P. than for Connie, but when do we hope to have some people hired? Do we have any sort of tentative date for our contact tracers, John?
Yeah, George, give me just a second, because I have an email on that. I can give you a little bit more specific. So it's obviously a heavy lift, but I will say that right now we have interviews scheduled this next week for our contact trace lead positions. We had a hundred and seventy-seven applicants for our contact tracer case investigators, which was a?
Wow, that's surprising.
Yeah, so we're taking some time to move through those. The good news is, is we are getting a good pool of candidates also that include bilingual and bicultural candidates, which will be important for these efforts. So we're spending some time doing that. We also have fourteen applicants for our consumer protection position. So interviews are being set up for next week. We think that it's going to be, George, a minimum of probably four weeks, but probably more like four to six weeks to go through the hiring process, bring people on and start the training. But we are well into the process.
Thank you.
So can I clarify on that, Steve?
Go ahead.
So we're currently using those that we previously trained for contact tracing. Those people within Snowmass staff, City of Aspen staff, Picken County staff?
So we're, we've been primarily relying on our existing public health staff, and we have surge capacity with our partners. What we're finding is as more activities are, just what we thought, right? As more activities are reopening, scheduling the surge capacity staff is a little bit more of a challenge. And so we have been managing in a stretched capacity within our current staffing to do that contact tracing. And obviously, with the increase in positives that we've seen and the multi-jurisdictional case investigations, it's a heavy lift right now. So thank you in advance. You know, this is a confirmatory reading. We have moved forward with recruiting these positions. I think we're seeing? reading. We have moved forward with recruiting these positions. I think we're seeing how much they're going to be needed as we hit these active times.
Well, we're hoping we're just going to see it now. We're not going to see it in two or three weeks. I'm going to keep that optimistic viewpoint. So I...
Okay, any other commissioner questions? Not, we'll go to the public hearing on this item. So this is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak about the budget request to add public health staffing for working on the COVID-19 virus issues? You can phone in to the number. Let's see, we have nobody on the phone right now. Kelly, is that right?
Yeah, nobody on the phone. Grassroots, is that number still? Okay, the number is still showing on Grassroots Broadcast.
We'll give a minute, and if anybody wishes to call in to comment on this, give them half a minute here. This is the length of time you need to be washing your hands when you wash your hands. Okay, I don't see anybody. There are no numbers popping up on the screen. I have a little trick now, Kelly. It shows nine participants, and we have nine of us on the screen, so I know that there aren't any other phone calls. So close the public comment, bring it back to the board. So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency resolution of the B O C C providing supplemental appropriations to the 2020 budget and amending the 2020 budget for COVID-19 public health staffing on confirmatory reading.
Second. Okay, it's moved in second to approve. Was there any further discussion? I would make a comment that this is so important. Connie's really stepping up to the plate on this, because having a good team of contact tracers and also a good team of people to work on public education about the COVID-19 virus is so important. And, you know, we're, one more thing, we're putting a big request into our budget to do this, but it's so important that we do it. It's a key thing that will allow us to keep our economy open and operating, and hopefully keep the number, when there are people getting the virus, to have them isolated and properly cared for and not spreading the virus to other people. So, there's no further comments. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we're all in favor of that.
Thank you. Bye, everyone.
Bye, Connie.
Thanks, Connie.
And Steve Rich and I will tag team the next item.
Bye, Connie.
Okay. Patty?
I just said goodbye to Connie.
So we have an emergency... Authorizing a grant agreement with FAA Federal Aviation Administration for Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security ACT. That's the CARES Act. And so, John Peacock and Rich, take it away.
Okay, well, I'm celebrating the fact that it looks like baseball's starting up. Both John Kenny and Chris couldn't be here, so I'm not up to bat, on deck. I'm actually in the hole to carry this one. So anyways, this is a confirmatory reading requesting adoption of the FAA funding for the CARES Act, like Commissioner Childs had mentioned, for the amount of $3,438,823. I believe the board had discussed this. Chris presented it earlier and talked about the expenses we're going to be going towards the day operations as per the CARES Act itself. So with that, I believe you may have had all your questions answered, and we just requested you go ahead and confirm this.
Okay, are there board comments, first of all, for Rich? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing.
Patty has one.
Patty, you have to hand it over.
I have a really quick comment. I see no reason why we should not accept this money, so I'm excited to move this forward.
Okay, this is a public hearing. And anyone from the public wishing to call in and comment on this emergency resolution dealing with the acceptance of the CARES Act money for use at the Picking County Airport. This is tall right now. And I'm not seeing that there's any extra people on. We will give another minute for 20 seconds for people to begin washing your hands. Public, you may call in right now if you wish to comment about this. We're all enjoying the smell of bridges, birds in his backyard.
I wonder what kind of bird that is.
Okay, not seeing anybody phoning in, so I will close the public hearing on this and bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve on confirmatory reading, the emergency resolution of the B O C C authorizing a grant agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act funding.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Kelly, seconded by...
Patty.
Patty.
So, let's see, any further discussion? Kelly?
Yeah, I'll just note, you know, this money is really helping us with being able to keep staff and travelers through the airport safe during the COVID pandemic to purchase equipment and supplies to be able to sanitize the airport up to, you know, the highest standards. And so thanks to our congressional and senator delegations for supporting and passing and moving this money to our community.
George?
Oh, thank you. John P., another question. This is great to have for the airport, the terminal. My question is, I've noticed an amazing number of jets out on the, out at the airport, more than usual at this time of year. Of course, it's GA. So my question then is, how is GA handling this as we are?
Yeah, George, we have the same information about our local public health orders being distributed. That's being distributed to the commercial customers coming in. The FBO is also required to operate under a COVID safety plan. They didn't have, I don't know if this is true right now, they usually have fewer people going through than the commercial terminal, although there's certainly a lot more commercial aircraft, I'm sorry, private aircraft right now seems like coming in than commercial. So, but they are operating under the same requirements. We are distributing the same information about our public health orders. And there's obviously generally less interaction on the GA side than there is on the commercial side.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. I know we keep on getting comments and concerns about testing our travelers coming in through our commercial, but I suspect we have as many coming in on GAs recently as well.
Yeah.
A whole nother group of people, similar to people who are frankly, in the summertime, generally, most of our guests arrive by private vehicle.
Right. Yeah, and so, you know, the same testing protocol applies with our visitors. If they are symptomatic, they are able to get a test at Aspen Valley Hospital. We are not testing everyone that comes through the airport. We've had the conversation about some of the challenges with the asymptomatic testing and what it does tell you, you know, and some of the timeframes that you'd want to do asymptomatic testing in after a confirmed exposure. But, you know, the community is right to also be concerned that as we bring in more people from outside the community, those are more potential vectors. So it's really important that, right as people are coming off of, you know, coming into the community through the airport, that we're getting the message about the five commitments and the requirements of our public health orders and the expectations that those will be followed. We did also just receive a large shipment of masks that we'll be handing out. I think, Rich, we received about 30,000 masks through the Federal Department of Human Services. And so we have not had, I think they showed up yesterday, I believe, right, Rich? And so we're still working on that distribution and whether any of those would go on the GA side or not. But certainly, we're going to make them available for our guests arriving on the commercial side.
Yeah, great. I know the city is putting together flyers, posters, and flyers that they're going to be distributing throughout the business community. I don't know if it's going to be redundant, but we would grab some of those for the airport and for GA as well, and perhaps all the car rental companies.
Yeah, and we do have, I don't know if you've seen the airport, but we have it pretty decked out with our five commitments, masks, how to get testing. You can't go anywhere, I think, in the airport right now without seeing those messages. And what we've been using...
Oh, great. I haven't been out.
Yeah. And what we've been using, George, we do have business resources out on the COVID-19 page, so www.pickingcounty.com, under the COVID-19 information. And under business resources, we have all of the posters and information and such available for anyone to print and use. And so we've certainly been using those resources out at the airport for some time now.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
So any further questions or commissioner comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the emergency resolution, say aye.
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 Steve, did we open that one, the public comment?
No, Patty and I couldn't remember if we opened that for public comment. I thought you did, and then I made a motion. There's nobody on the line.
Yeah, Steve did. Yes, I did. Yeah. Nobody came on, except Tammy came on. She was the only one unidentified.
Okay, moving to land use hearings. We have one item, a resolution approving the MM Rosemary Circle LLC activity envelope review and affirming the entitlements granted pursuant to the B O C C Resolution Number 109-2001 as amended. And this is asked to be continued to 8/26, August 26th. Let's see, Tammy, you were on the line. Do you want to make any comments about this first?
Yes, Steve. So we're actually asking to continue it to September 9th at this point. We're working with the applicant on some details, working some details out in terms of floor area and the conservation movement. So we're both, the staff and the applicant, are requesting that be September 9th instead of the August 26th. That was printed in the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. And this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing if anyone from the public wishes to comment about the Rosemary Circle application, which is up on the Woody Creek Road. You may call in right now. You can also comment on September 9th, when this item is, will be continued until. So you don't have to call in now, but you are allowed to if you wish. So we'll give part of a minute for people to call in, just in case there's anybody. Okay, not seeing anybody phoning in, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Once again, public, if you are watching and trying to get in on the phone, you can make comments. You can either send in comments or phone in on September 9th, when we are going to continue this till. So commissioners, I would entertain a motion to continue.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's moved in second to continue to September 9th. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Moving on, open discussion items. John Peacock, do we have anything?
Just a couple of things to note for the board. We did have five new positive cases yesterday. That is showing up on our stats page right now. When we have any confirmation whether there's, you know, any links to outbreaks, or if that was just, we don't have that, I don't have that information for you at this point. But still, you know, there was the cases mid-valley, of course, that were confirmed. And so we are seeing with this increased activity, more cases. And just a reminder, as the board stated at the outset of the meeting, following these rules, the five commitments, wear your masks, wash your hands, stay six feet apart, that is our best way right now to continue to slow the spread of the virus. So just wanted to note that in case the board hadn't seen it, since I had reported the earlier data of 80 cases. We're now at 85. The only other item I wanted to visit with you about is the E O T C meeting, which was scheduled, or is, it is scheduled for the 16th, and the intent of it is to adopt the strategic plan for use during the budgeting process and such. So there are a couple of options. We have confirmed that all of Aspen City Council and all of Snowmass is available that day. It is an advisory board, so it's not that we need a quorum to move forward. So there are a few options I just wanted to chat with you guys about. We do have a meeting on July 7th, I believe, a work session where David was going to be doing an E O T C prep. And assuming that there's not major changes from the board, you guys could be, you could discuss the board's position on the strategic plan then, and have representatives who are here. I'm trying to remember. I think there were two commissioners that were available on the 16th.
Kelly and Greg, but I thought Dave, I thought we also had scheduled...
Right now, I'm not planning to be there in this week unless I have to be.
Oh, so we've lost, we've lost four. Okay, I misunderstood yesterday.
But I think there's also a special meeting on that date for adopt... But I think there's also a special meeting on that date for the board to take action on the strategic plan. I don't
For the E O T C, that was, that was the idea is for everyone to take action at once.
But we have the special meeting, I think, that same day with Dave to do that on our own on that date.
Here, I'll look it up. It wouldn't be a Thursday.
I was going to say, I'll accept all your proxies.
We have a special meeting on Tuesday, July 7th, special meeting, emergency resolution, resolution for E O T C strategic plan. So, we will be taking formal action on Tuesday when the board is here prior to the E O T C meeting. It's scheduled on our agenda.
Oh, we set it up as a special meeting there. I thought we were setting it up as a special meeting at the E O T C.
We also have a prep for E O T C meeting just before that, but a half an hour later we have a resolution for the strategic plan. So, we as a board can take formal action prior to the E O T C meeting on the 16th.
Yeah, well, only Greg, are you able to attend or represent the board's position on that?
On the 16th?
Yes.
I'll commit to that.
I'll sit with you.
I'll be in transit or I'd call in.
It'll be a little lonely, but I can do it.
But maybe somebody else can zoom in or something. I will be in transit, I won't be in one place that day. I'll be in transit.
Yeah, I'll do a check in with the other two entities and just let them know what profile we're in and see if they want to move it. I don't think that this is going to, I don't think there's going to be a lot of changes at this point to that strategic plan, but you never know.
We'll see.
Okay.
Why does everyone look so nervous?
Letting you go alone? It's like, who has to cancel their plans to be with Greg? Give me Greg unchaperoned? I don't know.
That's all I have for open discussion.
I don't have any open discussion.
So, I would suggest before our meeting on July 7th that we all study that strategic plan very carefully, come prepared with questions for David during the work session prior to our special meeting. And if we have anything that we want to make changes on it, that is our best opportunity right then to present changes that we would like to see or that we are okay with the way it's written and could pass it just like it's written. So, do your homework before that meeting. And that's actually going to be our next meeting after this, I believe.
That's correct.
Let's see. That's correct. That's our next meeting will be July 7th. We have a little break here, Commissioners. So, any other open discussion items from the board? And not seeing anybody rising to the bait, so I'd accept a motion to adjourn. Great, so moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning this regular meeting on June 24th, say aye.
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 Thanks, Jordan. Thanks, Grassroots.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Grassroots.
Definitely thank you all for a good meeting today. Everybody be healthy, have a good break here until
Amy, are we on?
July 7th meeting.